Court order to, um, to pair municipalities. Of the eight municipalities that are part of the regional district, um, they are co-joined is the, is the, the word used, um, and it's Howell and Farmingdale, Manalapan, Englishtown, Freehill Township, Freehill Borough, and Marlborough and Manalapan, uh, I'm sorry, Marlborough and Coltsneck. Uh, so for the purposes of school board elections, the two municipalities vote for the representative uh, from each of those two municipalities. So as I read the results of the elections, you, you just, you'll have that in mind. Um, the results of elections, uh, from November 4th, 2014, uh, for Coltsneck representative, Mr. Vincent Acetola received 6,043 votes, uh, and write-in candidates, 65 votes, and that's from both Marlborough and Coltsneck together. That's what that, the vote count represents. Freehill Township res- representative, uh, Mr. Samuel Corolla received 5,660 votes, write-ins totaled 63, and, uh, that's voters of both Freehill Township and Freehill Borough. And Marlborough Township representative, uh, Mr. Michael Messinger with 6,270 votes and write-ins totaling 152. And again, that's, that's Marlborough and Coltsneck together, uh, does that vote count represented? So, um, it is my privilege to, at this time, swear in the three, uh, new board members. So gentlemen, if you could join me over there.
All right, so if you could all, if you were ready, I'd like to agree to that. I state your name.
I say my name.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
Uh, and to the governments established in the United States and this state.
The governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of your people, so help me God.
Under the authority of your people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I say my name.
To solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of superior of a Board of Education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the Board of Education. And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
And I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best I can do, so help me God.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Did you get it from? What? What?
Thank you very much.
I didn't hear you, what was that?
Okay, thank you and, and welcome, gentlemen. Um, I, at this point, will take a roll call. Mr. Acetola.
Present.
Mr. Bruno.
Present.
Mrs. Canario.
Yeah.
Mrs. Van Kauzer.
Here.
Mrs. Lablin.
Mr. Messinger.
Here.
Mrs. Sutera.
Here.
Mr. Corolla.
Here.
Mr. Moses.
Here.
Okay. Um, as, as part of our reorganization meeting process, um, there's a, a presentation which, um, Board Counsel, Mr. Mark Toscano, is going to walk us through. He'll give you a little background of why we do this at that point, and so if you could direct your attention to the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, congratulations to all the newly elected, uh, sworn-in members. This is part of an annual training and a service that, uh, we offer, uh, to all the Boards of Education, uh, that we represent. I apologize for those of you that may have heard this, uh, in the past, but it's never a bad idea to always have a little bit of a refreshment, uh, just a housekeeping item. Uh, on each one of your spots is a packet, uh, with tabs, and then a acknowledgement sheet that is paper clipped over top. Uh, I would ask please that you sign, uh, and date, uh, the top form and return it, uh, to the Board Secretary, uh, at the conclusion, uh, so that there is a record that you did receive the packet, uh, that you were present during the discussion tonight. Uh, if you return just the tab one, I'm going to walk through a PowerPoint that's going to be displayed beside me, but if you want to take notes or go into the margin. Uh, what we're talking about tonight is the School Board Ethics Act, and that is a set of guidelines and principles that all school board members must adhere to in each of their actions. Uh, what I just want to point out is, although I know you will find this all riveting, entertaining, and wildly informative, uh, this unfortunately does not excuse you from your mandatory trainings that are required by the New Jersey School Boards Association. Uh, you will still have to go through their respective training schedule, and the New Jersey School Boards Association is very good at making sure, attracted as Mr. Woods, uh, make sure all of you have the records of training. So, what we're going to do first is, we're going to step through the Code of Ethics. The Code of Ethics are, are 10 tenets, 10 statements, uh, that each board member must follow and is a part basically of the oath, uh, that we just undertook, just so our three newly-elected members undertake. Uh, the first one is that all board members will at home enforce all laws, rules, or regulations of the State Board of Education, court orders pertaining to schools, and will only seek desired changes to relieve all ethical needs. And I'm going to step through each one of these provisions, and please, if there's any questions, uh, I'm happy to answer them. But underneath that, kind of as an entertainment point, point out some cases where some board members got themselves in trouble and were found in violation, so that you're not looking at this in a vacuum, you're actually looking at it in context and how it has been decided. So, here, uh, we had a board member, the president of the board, violated this provision when he took it upon himself, uh, to contact someone that was hired by the board to tell them that their appointment, in his opinion, was voided, uh, because he had directed the superintendent prior to the meeting to remove the individual's name from the agenda, and that the superintendent failed to do so. Uh, this was a really entertaining case, uh, only because, uh, the ultimate penalty of removal, uh, was applied, very rarely applied. There's three levels of punishment generally, uh, there's censure, there's reprimand, and the ultimate is removal. Uh, this individual was removed, uh, because despite five or six different mailings, uh, on top of the unethical conduct, this individual also failed to respond to the School Ethics Commission, uh, on a number of occasions.
Excuse me, brother. Uh, is the line of succession that the Vice President takes over, there's no vote, in this case?
If the, if the board president is not able to fulfill their duties, then the Vice President does take over. If the board president is removed from office and there's a vacancy, then the board must, uh, conduct another vote, uh, for board president. If the vice president does not put in that, they succeed. Uh, number two, uh, board members will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, the seats to development in schools, that meet the needs of all children, regardless of fertility, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Uh, pretty self-explanatory, uh, this was a recent decision in 2010. A board member was found to violate this provision of the Act, uh, when he released an ethics complaint that was filed against another board member to the media, uh, and that complaint contained confidential information regarding the other board member's student child. So it was a little bit of a political backstab. Point three, as you see, one of some of the more popular ones, or the more ones that tend to be violated more often, will have more bullets underneath, uh, this is perhaps, uh, the biggest, and it, it has to do with what is a board member's role and function. Uh, board members, under this provision, must comply in their board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted, those will be affected by them. Uh, this is perhaps, uh, one of the areas, uh, where board members across the state of New Jersey have some trouble, because, uh, it's one of, you, you campaigned, you've been elected, you've been ordained, you take your seat, and now it almost sets in that, wait a second, this is not an executive branch, this is more of a legislative branch, and you are in essence one of nine, and your function as a board member only pertains, uh, functions and powers of board membership only pertain when the board is in session. So here, for example, uh, we had a charter school, uh, board member, which charter school trustees are also subject to the same rules and regulations as Board of Education members. We had a charter school trustee violate the code when he alone acted to terminate the chief administrative officer, which in a public school would be the superintendent, without giving notice, uh, to all the board members that such action was placed. Uh, another one, we had a board member violate this provision when he created and developed a detailed and all-encompassing staffing process, and then controlled the interview process for principal position, uh, by reviewing resumes and not allowing the superintendent to do anything in the hiring process independently. Uh, that is pure micromanagement, uh, at its finest. Uh, another, uh, example, we had a board member violate this provision when she went beyond appraisal of the police candidate's resume by, uh, arriving at the board office unannounced, uh, in order to review resumes, asking the secretary where the other resumes were, and if I am finding out that those resumes were in a locked office, she then asked the secretary and ultimately directed a custodian to open the office so she could go in there and review the resumes in order so that she could be satisfied that the best candidate was selected for the job. Point four, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members, see that they are well-run. Uh, succinctly, the administration runs the operations of the schools, the board is the overseer, in order to make sure that everything is proceeding accordingly. Here, we have a violation, for example, uh, where a board member asked for copies of SAT reports directly from the guidance secretary, inspected lockers in the board locker room, and instructed staff from supervision of students. Again, overstepping. We have a board member trying to administer the schools rather than contacting the superintendent with superintendent's designate. Uh, it's important to note that in one of the provisions later on, uh, if you receive complaints from members of the public, or somebody stops you in the supermarket, or you receive an email, you are ethically bound and ethically required to bring any of those concerns to the attention of the superintendent first. Another instance, we had a board member violating, uh, this provision by directing the principal to inform other principals that an event was not foreproved, directing the principal to inform other principals to disregard the superintendent's instructions, and insisting that the superintendent refrain from disciplining the principal that was involved. Uh, last example, a board member violated this provision of the code by instructing the superintendent to allow the graduating senior to participate in graduation ceremonies when the superintendent had determined that the student would be barred from participating due to ser- safety concerns. Uh, those safety concerns related to the fact that the police had reported that there were threats that the student was the target of shooting, and the board member was aware of that report, and he attempted to override the superintendent's decision. Point five, I will recognize that authority rests with the board and make no personal promises or take any private action that may compromise the board. Examples here, uh, board members found to violate this provision by using profanity to threaten the superintendent and a member of the public after a board meeting on two separate occasions. Another example, board members found to violate this provision by independently writing a letter intending to speak for the board's editor of the newspaper concerning the board business and criticizing school administrators. Now, what's interesting here, uh, and just to kind of step back, uh, just because you are a member of the board does not mean that you do surrender your First Amendment rights. Uh, if you do wish, uh, to send a, a letter to the editor, uh, or, uh, maybe a public posting, uh, there are certain conditions that apply, first being, you must clearly state that although you are a board member, you are not speaking for the board, you are in fact speaking as an individual. Uh, the second provision, uh, requirement is that you cannot reveal any confidential information. Uh, when the board is not in session, there are two spokespersons, uh, for the Board of Education by policy, that is the board president and the superintendent.
Mr. Scott?
Yes?
With everything that you just commented on there, would that apply also to after a meeting, if the press is here and they want to in- interview an individual board member?
Yeah, if, if, if the press is here after an individual board member, you should precious your comments that you're not speaking for the Board of Education. Any official position of the board is either communicated during the meeting itself or by the board president, superintendent.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, the last one, uh, just very quickly, is, uh, a board member violated this provision by posting an email on a public website that contained medical information about an employee which exposed the board to possible consequences, including, uh, potentially, uh, again, just understanding that your authority rests and ends, begins and ends here at the board meetings. Okay?
Excuse me, can I say?
Yes, of course.
Going back to that, that first, uh, I think you went.
Well, we're threatening the superintendent.
No, the first one about the voting on the bill list, I think it was.
Oh, go ahead. I guess.
Okay, did, I'm, 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 I guess I'm jumping. Can you, when you've reached that line, can you, can you explain like what should have been?
Sure, absolutely. Okay. Point six, uh, is the board members refuse to surrender their independent judgments to special interests or partisan groups to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Uh, first case, uh, a board member violated the Act when she on three separate occasions voted on the bill list that contains a move to the printing firm that was owned by her husband for which she was employed. What the board member should have done in that instance, what? When the bill list comes up, make a note publicly, uh, before the vote is recorded, uh, please note my extension on check number A31-02. So you can vote yes, uh, to a large item like the bills, but you need to note your particular extensions, uh, to individual checks, uh, that are to entities that you are, uh, friends with, relatives with. We see this come up, uh, when, uh, the reimbursement checks come to New Jersey School Boards and that, uh, we'll have each of the board members just respectively make a notation and a publication that they abstain as replaced checks they payable to the board. Uh, another one, uh, a board member violated the code with the exerted unauthorized pressure on the superintendent and fellow board members in connection with his wife's application for employment. That board member also requested that new board members contact the superintendent to communicate their support for his wife's employment. Uh, these are extreme examples, which you would be surprised what happens, this does not, it has not happened in the three and a half years I've been working here, uh, with Freehill Regional District, uh, but these are examples of what does go on in the public and state of course.
Yes, uh, ju- just to clarify something you had just mentioned regarding voting on the bills list and, uh, you know, uh, family, friends, and you use the word friends, I, is, is the disclosure statement a good guide for what you need to abstain on, or does it go beyond that?
It can go beyond that.
Okay.
By way of example, uh, if, I'll give you an example, I'll use myself as an example. Uh, my law firm is a professional service, uh, there would be a, a check they payable, uh, to our firm for services provided. If I were to be, uh, or another member of my firm were to be providing legal services to individual board members, uh, be it in the state, the state board preparing the will, uh, doing, you know, any sort of, uh, let's say, attracting, uh, representation, that board member will be precluded from voting on not only the employment of my firm, but any payment to my firm of voting forward.
Okay, so it's somewhat the honor system because, uh, there's nowhere to know what relationships exist across.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, and it, and it, again, if, if it does put this at the end, if you have any questions, if you have any, uh, concerns about something that's coming up, please reach out to me. My email address is at the end of this, office phone numbers at the end of this, and I'm more than happy to sit with all of you and, and walk through each matter, and we're always going to take a conservative approach here. Okay. Uh, point seven, I will make whole confidential matters pertaining to schools which have disclosed as either individuals within schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, again, consult with my fellow board members and appropriate to the staff the aspirations of the community toward the school. Here, we had a board member found to violate the code when she sought revealed confidential information about a board member's child in closed session, uh, some injured board swabbing. Board member was also found to violate the code here by compiling and disseminating a spreadsheet that she had prepared to all members of the board with full names of all students that had been suspended from school over a certain period, uh, because the board member felt that there was a disproportionate, uh, suspension of students based on, uh, certain racial considerations. Board member was found to violate this provision by publicly posting confidential information that a staff member was removed from the school and hospitalized for medical condition, yet taking it upon herself to communicate on behalf of the board as a whole. Uh, examples of what we must maintain as confidentiality are executive session discussions and grievances that we may hear, uh, and, uh, negotiations, strategies, and updates. Point eight, I will vote to approve best qualified person available after consideration of the recognition of the chief school administrator here between the superintendent. Uh, that is, uh, earth and base and statute, uh, the only way that anyone is hired, uh, by a public school district, uh, for employment, is upon recognition superintendent and affirmative roll call vote in the full majority of the board. Uh, so, it's a two-part process, superintendent must recommend and the board must vote to approve. That does not mean that the board must rubber stamp or that the board, board must, uh, approve everything, uh, that is what I'm for. Uh, rather, uh, this was a great case in that it pointed out that board members would not violate this provision, uh, if they voted not to reappoint employees to the former position despite the recognition of the principal superintendent. This does not require, uh, that the board member set all recognitions, but the board must consider the recognitions of superintendent and must not act in a manner that is arbitrary, capricious, unreasonable, or discriminatory. Any questions there? This is another, uh, big one, uh, that we're seeing more and more of, especially in the age of social media. Uh, I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. Here, we had a board member violate the code when this employee, a board member called employee home, he angered the employee, refused to provide them with reports that they had requested. Board member violated this provision when he sent a letter to the superintendent copying the president of the state Board of Education, executive county superintendent, and other board members, accusing the superintendent of allowing his employees to violate board policy. Board member violated this provision of the code when he sent an email to the superintendent that was also copied to the business administrator and all other members of the board that was threatening and intimidating in that it asked for the superintendent to provide an accounting of his personal leave. President of the board was found to violate this provision by posting comment, the following comments on his Facebook page and a link to a picture of the superintendent, quote, "Now if we could only do something about our local terrorists that destroy their dreams and their futures."
It's like dysfunction at its finest.
Last provision, and I mentioned this before, we proceed through proper channels. Board members refer all complaints to the superintendent and will act on complaints in public meetings only, and af- oh, public meetings only after a failure of an administrative solution. Board members, uh, was found to violate this provision by going to see the principal directly in injection with a parental statement that had, he had received rather than referring the complaint to the superintendent. Another instance, board members found to violate the code by not providing the superintendent with letters, uh, because he did not like the superintendent's management of issues raised in the letters. Instead, the board member went to other members of the administration to address the issues. Uh, the administration of schools are to be administered by the administration, okay? Kind of a theme that you see, again, keeping with that policy plan and appraisal. Uh, now, kind of what's interesting, what can get a little complicated, and I'm going to certainly help, uh, all of you through this as we go, uh, is we have the School Ethics Act, which was passed in 2001, 2002. Uh, in March of 2007, uh, the accountability regulations, uh, were adopted, and what gets a little confusing is a couple of provisions in the accountability regulations deal with issues, uh, that arguably were already addressed by the School Ethics Act, and there's, there's a little bit of an overlap and a conflict. Uh, for instance, within the fiscal accountability regulations, every Board of Education must adopt a nepotism policy, and that nepotism policy has very specific provisions that must be in there, dealing with not only the hiring of, of relatives or immediate family members of the Board of Education, but also in dealing with negotiations. Uh, and where this gets a little tricky is the School Ethics Act and the accountability regulations use the same terms, but define them differently. Uh, and so what I've given here is a little bit of a chart. Uh, so the Ethics Act focuses on members of the immediate family. Uh, who's an immediate family member? As you see here in the left-hand column, that's a spouse or parent. Uh, that also includes a dependent child, excuse me, partner, thank you. Uh, that also includes a dependent child residing in the same household. Uh, interestingly enough, in the nepotism side of this, uh, you have spouses, you have parents or step-children, you have child or step-children, sibling, half-sibling, step-siblings, aunts or uncles, nieces or nephews, grandparents, grandchildren, or in-laws. What's interesting and what's missing there is the requirement that they live in the same household. You'll see that nepotism issue is not there. Uh, relative, as you see in the left-hand column, uh, is limited to only a spouse or a partner, a child, natural or adopted, sibling, or parent. Again, relative, the right-hand column includes everybody that you see. Uh, the Ethics Act has this kind of amorphous provision dealing with, you can't assist others, while others is not defined, and it's where you get sometimes into that gray area where if you're not careful, the School Ethics Commission, which is the entity that forces the School Ethics Act, can play a little bit of a game of vouch. Yes?
I hope I didn't miss this, but can you just address briefly the difference between the Code of Ethics and the School Ethics Act, and which applies to whom?
Absolutely. Uh, generally, the School Ethics Act deals with your dealings as a board member. The nepotism and the fiscal accountability regulations deal with two discrete areas, the first being, uh, who is hired or retained by the board, the second being, uh, collective negotiations, which the Board of Education is about to enter into. So, to kind of boil it down quickly, uh, if you have a relative, and that's confined here in this column on this side, if you have a relative that is a member of the local bargaining unit, meaning a, a member of the bargaining unit that we are bargaining with, we are negotiating with, uh, you cannot discuss or vote on the contract, you can't participate in negotiations in any way, and you also cannot be present in executive session when str- when strategies are discussed. If you have an immediate family member that is a member of the same statewide union, so your husband, uh, is a teacher in another school district, uh, you cannot, we are negotiating with teachers here in the Freehill Regional District, discuss or vote on the proposed agreement, you cannot participate in any way in negotiations, nor can you be present in executive session when those negotiations are discussed. Uh, however, the one caveat here is you are allowed, uh, to vote once a tentative memorandum agreement is reached, that includes salary guides and total compensation package, and if we get to that, I will certainly assist you. Uh, those of you that have been on board know, uh, that we, following this meeting, we put together a spreadsheet, uh, that all board members receive, kind of setting forth participating what, who must abstain, uh, from which negotiations, uh, which is going to be particularly helpful because we are, as I said before, we're entering into negotiations this year, or already commenced negotiations with five of the six bargaining units. Okay, some conflicts, financial involvement, that basic tenets. Any basic tenants, please recuse yourself when you or your immediate family member or your business organizations might be reasonably expected to impair your objectivity or independent judgment. This is language that the School Ethics Commission has put out there. You shouldn't discuss or vote on any financial involvement. So again, example here, don't participate in negotiations when your relatives are members of the board. Now, if you're not able to discuss, and if we have enough conflicts, then the board of education may be faced with an instance where it has to adopt the doctrine of necessity. The doctrine of necessity is something that can only be used for very limited, discreet purposes. And what it basically is, is a doctrine that says, hey, we have so many members that are conflicted or that are legally prohibited from participating that we don't have enough people to conduct business. So we have to, in essence, enact a doctrine of necessity. It's a doctrine that you publicly enact in the resolution, you have to publicly stage the conflicts of the members in question. And then after you enact the doctrine, you then have to send a copy of the resolution that you use to invoke the doctrine to the School Ethics Commission within thirty days. It is not something that is invoked often. I think in the eleven years I've been practicing doing this, I've invoked it four times for that time. If any of the bargaining units here in the regional district had endorsed any view in the year in which negotiations were beginning, you could not participate in negotiations. To my knowledge, that is not happening. Any board members that endorsed the prior year start, prior to start negotiations are able to participate. Know that because you aren't members of the board of education, we assume you are here for the right reasons, and all are, Mr. Bois. The board must cover any costs relating to defending you or any act or omission that arises out of your official duties as a member of the board. That covers all civil and administrative proceedings, win or lose. It also covers any criminal or quasi-criminal actions that may occur against you, but the caveat for any criminal actions or quasi-criminal actions is you must first obtain a decision in your favor to be an eligible community person. So just wrapping up, just some general ethics questions, just to think about here, for you to kind of look at. Where do you go get help? I'm here at every single meeting. You have my email address, you have my telephone number, you can always contact me. If you'd rather not discuss the issue with me for whatever reason, I don't bear a prejudice, I won't hold against you. You are certainly free to contact the School Ethics Commission, the phone number is down in there. In addition, you can also visit the website, which I provided, and you can also install the Jersey School Boards, Department of Legal Division. But just as any point, just know that they will tell you that they're not giving you legal advice, they insult your court attorney. But that's basically, should I apologize for going a little over on time a lot, Mr. Bois?
Thank you, Mr. Tiscana. Thank you, Mr. Tiscana. Right now, I'm going to ask for a motion to go into executive session. The items for executive session are listed on the agenda. We anticipate it will take approximately a half an hour, which puts us back out here right around eight o'clock.
We'll be here by eight. I'll motion.
May I have a motion, Mr. Bruno, a second?
Second.
Mrs. Lavin, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, we're adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. The board is back in session. Our apologies, we ran a little bit over in our executive session. First thing, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Walls of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press, issue of November 21, 2014. All municipal clerks of the township and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notice have been met. For those of you who are just joining us earlier this evening, as this is the reorganization meeting of the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education, our three new board members were sworn in, Mr. Vincent Acetola, Mr. Sam Corolo, and Mr. Michael Messinger, and have taken their seats at the table. Reorganization meeting, there are some structural things that need to be done in order for the board to establish itself. And one of those things is to the election of officers. So right now, I'd like to open the floor to the board members for nominations for the office of president of the board to serve until the next reorganization meeting.
Mr. Bois, I'd like to nominate Mr. Heshi Moses for president.
Thank you.
I second that.
No seconds are necessary for nominations. Seeing no further nominations being made, I'm going to ask for a first and a second on the following resolution. Be it resolved that nominations be closed and that the board secretary be instructed to cast a unanimous vote to elect Mr. Heshi Moses, president of the Board of Education. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll motion.
Any discussion? Already? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Ms. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corola?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
I'm related to him, so I have to stand back.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting's all yours, Mr. Moses.
All right, Heshi.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, you would be. I'd like to open the floor for nominations for vice president to serve until the next reorganization meeting. Ready to nominate? Yes.
I'd like to nominate Jen Sutera.
Jen Sutera. Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are no more nominations, we need a...
A motion and a...
A motion and a second for that resolution.
You have to...
Oh, I have to. Be it resolved that nominations be closed and the board secretary be instructed to cast a unanimous vote to elect Ms. Jen Sutera, vice president. We have a bill? Yes. Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bois?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Vote? Yes.
Mr. Corola?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
All right.
Next is election of...
There are a number, if I could, Mr. Moses?
Take it.
The next grouping of items, which is numbers five through 11, are typical reorganization meeting items. I would suggest that you consider them in a group.
Okay. Do we need discussion on that? Resolution five. Okay.
You'll need a motion.
Okay, we need a motion to take five through 11.
Motion.
Second.
Now discussion.
Discussion? Seeing none? Mr. Bois?
I'm sorry, who needs a second? Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corola?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Congratulations, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, communications are on file. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. So first and foremost, congratulations once again, Mr. Corolo, Mr. Acetola, for being elected to the board, Mr. Messinger, for your second term as a board member. Wish you all the best. Couple things, this is an artificially early meeting. We're required by code to conduct the reorganization during the first week of January. And so I'd just like to thank members of the central administrative team, because in order to put a board meeting agenda together, it actually takes a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes to get that done. And that certainly resulted in a lot of work over the winter break. So thank you, folks, I appreciate it. We're first day back from what ended up being a rather long break this year, just for the way that the holidays fell. And we've hit the ground running. We have our eighth grade orientations throughout most of our high schools over the course of the next week or two. Those eighth grade orientations serve a critical role, even more so in our district than some others, as a result of our magnet programs where students come to take a look at, you know, multiple high schools oftentimes. We do always provide a meeting prior to the eighth grade orientation at each building for our special education parents and to help acclimate those folks to the high school as well. And those evenings are, you know, generally very, very well attended, very informative, and help to give the larger community a real understanding of what's happening in our school buildings and what our expectations are as a school system. Interesting item that's on the agenda that's up for approval tonight that I just wanted to note, item I two, is a resolution for a shared services agreement with the Howell municipality to explore partnering together to ultimately, we hope, bring a turf field to Howell High School. Mr. Bois and I met with Mayor Gatto, Deputy Mayor Nacastro from Howell several weeks back, had some subsequent dialogue with the board members who were certainly supportive of moving forward with that endeavor. You know, hopefully, it can help serve as a model of what the power of shared service really can do. You know, folks oftentimes, folks banter around the term of shared services as this cost-effective measure, and it's not always the case. But I think shared service in the spirit of representing one community is very powerful. So hopefully, we'll be exploring that in the coming months, and I will certainly update the board and the community appropriately as we move forward with that initiative. January 12th, we have a regional superintendent's meeting. Those meetings have become very frequent, important meetings with all of the regional school districts' superintendents come together. Usually every five or six weeks, they're, you know, always to go through articulation issues, specific data points. It's an opportunity for me, as the superintendent of the Freehold Regional High School District, to share a lot of the outcome data of how students from our K eights progress within our system, areas that we identify as potential needs as well. So that, you know, we've come to rely on those meetings to work together as, you know, as much as possible as one large school district. And I have to compliment my colleagues at the K eights, because there's really a spirit of collaboration that's manifest within those meetings over the past several years. So our next meeting is January 12th. We're moving forward on the initial process of putting together our budget for the 2015-16 school year. We'll have much more information to share on that at the February meeting, as Mr. Bois really drills down on specific areas in the coming weeks. We spent a lot of time over this break, you know, starting to get our heads wrapped around Mr. Bois, much more so than myself, but starting to get our heads wrapped around the numbers and what that may look like. And as we move forward, obviously, we'll be keeping the public and the board apprised with our status. We've also, as we head toward the implementation of PARC testing, which I'm sure folks are very familiar with, you know, that's the new online testing that is replacing the HESPA in the case of New Jersey high schools. We've updated and continue to update our information on our website. There's a user-friendly manual there for parents and students with links to all kinds of wonderful practice test information, frequently asked questions, and the such. I'm confident, yeah, I feel very good about our plan as a school district to implement that testing. If you look out across the state, there are a tremendous number of school districts that are going to have to run abbreviated sessions, late, you know, early, late bell schedules for a number of students while they're testing particular students. And we have created schedules in each of our six high schools that will allow us to continue to run the regular instructional day while we test the students who are designated for testing. So the minimum distraction possible. We did also, as many school districts in the state have done, we did this months ago, move off of a midterm schedule, thinking that we have quite enough testing in the school system with PARC. And we really want to get a gauge for this school year about what that looks like. We don't have any specific data yet on if any devices enable students to perform better or worse. So absent that, we have, we've felt strongly that we weren't going to move forward with Chromebooks or iPads or any other device other than a desktop that we know a student is fully familiar with, fully understands, until we have some more specific data after year one with these new requirements. So there's been an awful lot of work that has gone into that over the past several months. We have teams with assigned leaders at each of our six high schools that have come together regularly to help map out those schedules, to seek the best ways possible to minimize overall interruption to other students' days, the instructional day who are not being tested. And I feel confident that we're going to move through year one of this new platform as well as any school district in the state. So that concludes my report.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
This is getting back to the Howell High School shared services agreement or proposal. Now, over the last three years, I've heard from several of my colleagues on the board about horrendous the field conditions are at Howell High School, but I personally never experienced it, because the couple of times I've been there, it's been good weather. So do you think sometime in the next few months, when the weather is really bad or in the aftermath of the really bad weather, is it possible to have some type of field trip, so to speak? So we could see the field and really know why it has to be replaced?
I'll drive the bus. Yeah, the finance committee, that might be a good thing, you know, for finance committee to meet at Howell High School and then walk right out.
I just want to just, I don't need this.
I just want to say, Michael, it's not just because the field is terrible, it's one field that everybody plays on it. They don't have the facilities like all the other high schools have. So you have one field where the soccer team plays on it, the football team plays on it. You're talking both soccer teams, you know, football, lacrosse, you know what I mean? It's destroyed, you know? And plus, it's on the water table.
Okay. All right. Next, I don't think we have any board reports. Is that correct? Okay, which brings me to my favorite part of the board meeting, public participation. We have only one name, Carl Acetola. And Carl is being put under the four-minute rule.
It's only two minutes.
Oh, I thought, oh, we're giving him four. That's all right. So Carl, the floor is yours.
You have two minutes, Carl. It's your issue.
Hello, everyone. We are here to talk to the board. I decided to speak tonight because the last board meeting where I sat at the dais there, it was awards night, and there were so many people speaking, we had to move things along. And I will limit this to four minutes. And I'm not going to limit this to speaking about only two people, but it's really addressed to the new board members. And the two people that I'm going to speak of on this dais are Mark Tiscana, bingo. Back in October of 2012, as you recall, I was called out to Coltsnet High School, and it was during Hurricane Sandy. I didn't know what was going on. I walked into this parking lot, which is right behind my house, and it was a woefully dangerous and uncertain situation. There was an obviously very disabled person walking in the wrong direction into the rainfall, and I ran over and grabbed him and said, let me help you into the school, and I was quite concerned, and I was met by Mr. Sampson. There was only one police officer, there were maybe a sheriff's deputy, if I recall correctly, and Sean Boyce was there, and Jim Burns was there. Now, this brings me to a point that you were speaking of today. We have a system that is required by law, and it works. We have a good system. There's reason for a board member not to act alone. There's a reason for nobody to act alone. When we act as a group, we get the benefit of everybody. Now, I was watching Mr. Sampson as a new board member, and as I was a new board member, he was the new superintendent, and the first thing he said is, he looked over to Sean and he said, what should we do? Now, a lot of people would say, well, he's the superintendent, why would he ask? That was the best question you could have asked. That's how we have to work as a board. Everybody should ask questions and work cooperatively together, and that's what this board has consistently done, and that's why the system works. And it was such a pleasure, in the three and a half years that I served on the board, I never saw one ethical violation for anybody acting for their own benefit. It was only for the benefit of the students, and I was so proud to be a part of the Freehold Regional District. And to conclude, because I know my four minutes are up, actually, I just want to say, if there are ever any questions, you know, I was out there, and I used to do federal audits, investigations, monitorings, and I worked on both sides of the fence, in order to always ensure that everything is right, reach out to Mr. Toscano and ask him if it's above board, and he will give you the right answer. And with that, I'll see you one time soon.
Thank you.
Carl. Carl, speaking on behalf of the board, I'm sure I am, I just want to let you know how much we enjoyed having you with us for these last three years and how much we're going to miss you and your expertise in certain areas. And also, Vincent, I just want to let you know, we're not trying to bully you here. Carl Jr., the green gentleman sitting in front of your microphone, he's there just to explain the agenda, not to tell you how to vote. Okay. Okay. Next, we come to the agenda, which is F1 to I2.
If I could just...
Of course, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Moses. There's an addendum, I believe it's available on the back table, it's a supplement to F1 and F4, and also, as Mr. Toscano had just pointed out and suggested that I mention it, on the agenda item F11, approval of substitute home instructor/volunteer personnel, under volunteer coaches, one of the names, the position is left blank, that is intentionally left blank, also, the spelling of the first name on that particular one is D-A-R-I-A-N, so if you could also note that correction, that's all that I have, Mr. Moses.
Okay. All right. So, including the addendums, I'd like to take the agenda in one shot, and any discussion there?
Oh, you need a...
Motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Jen. We have a second?
Second.
Second from Liz.
Discussion.
Discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Boyce.
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Fankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to new business, and under new business, I would like to just welcome Sam and Vincent to the board, a great infusion of new blood, one, an ex-administrator, and one, a brilliant student, so I'm hoping that this will really help the board in a lot of areas. All business? Seeing none? Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Thank you, Sam.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vincent, you're allowed to speak up.
Okay. Oh, yeah, no, I...
Right now.
Actually, before we adjourn, do you, Mr. President, do you think I could speak a few remarks?
Absolutely, Vincent.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. President. Yeah, so I just want to extend my thanks to many people who helped encourage me to pursue this seat. You know, I look at this board sometimes, and I see former administrators, former teachers, parents, and our very important taxpayer advocates, and I see that, you know, they all have personal histories and skills that really, I think, very wisely lend a unique mix to the board. So, I'm hoping no one really expects me to, you know, call upon me for any geriatric wisdom, but, you know, I think I'll be able to lend my own perspective of my own as a student, you know, speaking, drawing upon the wisdom of Pete Townsend, you know, every generation really has their own challenges. A lot of them are similar, but a lot of them are unique, and I really find hope that at least I'll be able to speak up on behalf of my own cohort here. And then finally, I would also like to thank the previous Mr. Acetola that sat in the seat. Everyone has their own unique way of contributing to the community. This was his, and he set a high standard, and is definitely something that I hope I'll be able to uphold in the future. If not, I'll definitely be hearing it at home, so...
[laughter]
That's pretty much all, and thank you very, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Vincent. Well said, well said. All right. No other comments? Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
That was Liz.
Motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sam. All those in favor?
Aye.
So shall you say, so shall it be written. Have a good night. Thank you for coming.